Welcome, everyone. I now call the December 5th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The City of Bothell provides the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed, both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting S and Ds, please speak clearly and pause frequently, and mute your microphone when not speaking. All right, moving on to meeting agenda approval. Council will be adding an executive session to begin the meeting pursuant to potential litigation RCW 4230-110-1I for 10 minutes with no action expected. The time is 6:02. If there are no objections, we will adjourn to the executive session now and reconvene at 6:12. All right, welcome back. Counselor, are there any other changes to the agenda proposed tonight? Seeing none, we're going to move on to public comment or public engagement opportunities. It's a new order tonight, and I can almost read. We've got the Winter Porch Light Parade. You can experience the magic of lights with family and friends this holiday season with the Fourth Annual Winter Porch Light Parade. Save the date for Coffee with a Cop. You can join Bothell Police for Coffee with a Cop on Saturday, December 16th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the Canyon Park Starbucks. And we've got the Community Academy. You can go behind the scenes with Bothell Police and register for Community Academy, a multi-week experience beginning January 11th. And now, we're going to move on to public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. Also, if you are here to provide testimony on Agenda Bill 23193, Public Hearing and Potential Action on Proposed Rezone from Residential R9600 to Downtown Transition Affordable Housing Overlay, we will be taking that testimony later on in the evening. So please hold your comments or testimony on Agenda Bill 23193 until the designated time. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We have received one written comment from Susan Gardner, and she's also here to speak tonight, I believe. So, Ms. Gardner, if you'd like to go to the podium, while you're going up there, I will say that public comments shall be limited to topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in the speaker's comments being suspended. When your three minutes start, the light at the dais will turn green. At one minute left, it will start blinking, and at 30 seconds left, it will turn yellow. You may go ahead, Ms. Gardner.
I'm Suzie Gardner. I am Chief Elf and a Bothell History Museum docent. So I'm actually speaking to next week's consent agenda, which I cannot be present for. So this is about extending the museum's current lease for one year so that we can come to an agreement on a long-term lease. History is about stories and connections. On Sunday, we had a holiday tea. We had 179 people at the museum enjoying that. One of the things I learned, because I was staffing the cabin, was that there's something called a tree scaler. And I'll leave it at that. If you're curious, you can come to the museum when we're open again in April. Visitors add knowledge to the things that we have in the museum. I want to talk about two events that happened with 30-something visitors. One was about a cast iron scrubber that we have in the kitchen, and it's this mesh scrubber. And I knew that that was to clean cast iron, but this 30-something person also mentioned that on the handle at the base, there's this scraper to scrape up extra heavy stuff. I didn't know that, and so we learned from that. You got a digital handout that is germane to what I'm saying. The picture is of his master's voice, Nipper the Dog, and a Victrola. We have a working Victrola in the museum. So we also have the picture of Nipper above that Victrola. One time, in October, a visitor came and mentioned that, he said, his master's voice, he goes, he was from India, and he said, "That's HMV in India, a huge record company." And so that is something that I got to take away and learn and also share with the many visitors from India that we have coming to the museum. Just want to let you know that history is very important to this community.
Thank you. Next, we have Stacy Valenzuela, and she has joined us virtually, so I'm going to ask her to... Stacy, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can see you too now. Go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Stacy Valenzuela Kenmore. I'm asking you tonight if you would please support additional legislation session, Bills 1389, 5435, and 5697 for rent stabilization, as well as tax-exempt programs, 1% to 3% infrastructure loans, as well as the funding for resident-owned communities in manufactured homes. I'm also going to read a September 28th, '23 letter from Representative Alex Ramel. "Last year, we made a push for rent stabilization to protect tenants from the drastic and unsustainable rent increases. I was disappointed that the rent stabilization fell short. Since then, we've been continually seeing excessive rent increases, and the outlook of statewide renter protections has reminded me why we must take action. For those who have shared their housing struggles with him this summer, thank you for being vulnerable and candid with your experience. I've heard from residents manufactured home parks who are experiencing housing instability because of ballooning rents and their sale of their parks. Outside of our community, an investigation has revealed a growing threat of displacement as investors purchase these communities. Some of our neighbors even shared 50% rent increases in situations where landlords failed to meet basic maintenance obligation. Ultimately, this makes one of the most affordable forms of housing less and less accessible and can force individuals into homelessness. I was recently at a meeting with some independent rental property owners. We discussed the escalating costs of renting in Washington. They, like me, were astounded at the exorbitant rent increases that some folks are experiencing, why some landlords engage in price gouging behavior and fail to provide stable and affordable housing. Many other units were trying to do the right thing with their tenants by keeping rental increases modest for existing tenants. Like their tenants, they were being harmed by the very same rental companies that have directly contributed to this crisis. We now have a clear understanding of how these companies manipulated and caused our rental crisis with tools to help landlords set prices. The key takeaway is that this tool allegedly inflated prices artificially and even encouraged landlords to let units go vacant to escalate the market. It's happening locally with some of our manufactured home communities. We know that for every $100 in rent increases, homelessness rates go up by 9%. There are millions of Washingtons being displaced because of rental rate increases. Renters are hurting, and so are small rental property owners. That is why we need to move on rent stabilization."
Thank you, Stacy. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have on the list. That's all I have on my list, Mayor Thompson. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak? We'll call on people here. Mark, Mr. Swanson, if you'd like to go up. If anybody's in the virtual audience and wishes to speak under public comment, please use the raise hand function. Once we get through people here in the live audience, we'll call on you. Thank you.
You know, personally, I'd sure like to see the word engagement changed out, because a three-minute pitch is more of an expository statement. It has nothing to do with engagement. As many of you are aware, I round for office and failed. But the way I look at it, there's over 4,000 people that voted for me despite no...
Mr. Swanson, is this relevant to something that's on this or a future agenda?
Can I have my time back due to your interruption if I answer this?
Mr. Swanson, your time's going, and the clerk was very clear that this has to be something related to a current or future agenda.
Here's the future agenda. There is no quorum in this hall because of conflict of interest by four of the sevens
in council. Mr. Swanson, this is not relevant to a current or future agenda.
You cannot conduct city business with this conflict of interest. I intend...
Mr. Swanson, please speak to something on the agenda.
The downtown affordable housing overlay is deficient in process because of this conflict of interest, and I plan, if I'm successful, to roll it back. So whatever you guys do today, if I have my way, it's not going to stick, but I know I'm going to lose. But I'm going to document who you people are all along the way. Thank you.
Mr. Loesch, if you'd like to go. Did I say it right? No.
I answered anything, so... Losh, is how my mother says it, so...
My apologies.
That's okay.
One day I'll get it right.
Whenever anybody in the government talks about controls of any kind, it's contrary to what built this nation. We're a free-market enterprise economy, and that's what's made us the greatest economy in the history of man. And when we start talking about interfering with the market, then it's contrary to all of our interests. And we talk about rent controls, you make it onerous for an investor to invest in a rental property, and if he does invest, he's going to make sure that he puts the absolute highest price he can on what he knows is going to be a difficult undertaking. So it's not at all in anybody's interest for any legislative body to even talk about rent controls. You're only going to force increase in rents. If you want affordable housing, you can build it. You have to make it an attractive process in gaining permits, but you can build affordable housing. They're just going to be smaller, and the best way to do it is to build mini condominiums. There are many projects on the East Coast that have been very successful. If somebody buys a small, inexpensive condominium and doesn't want to live in it for any reason, then of course it becomes affordable rent. So that's the way to do it with a free-market economy that we've all benefited from. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience here tonight which is to speak? Please raise your... or please step to the podium and state your name. I am not seeing anybody. Is there anybody in the virtual audience that wishes to speak? If so, please use the raise hand function and state your name when we panel you in. That's all I have, Mayor Thompson.
Thank you. Next up is the City Manager Report. City Manager?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Based on the content of tonight's agenda, I was not planning initially to have a report, but I do just want to give a quick thank you to our crews in Public Works and in Public Safety and Parks who have been out and responding to the very, very wet weather. We've had conversations earlier this fall about leaf removal and different things that we were doing to prepare for days when heavy rains and moisture came, and that's certainly been going on right now. So just to share, we have had some flooding here in Bothell as well as in the rest of the region since 7:00 a.m., between 7:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. today. Fifteen residents had reported in to let us know where to look. Again, we are always out in the field, but having eyes and ears and out in the community is a great help, and we appreciate hearing from people. Our crews were prepared for this. Last Friday, they started checking drains and conditions of well-known flooding risk issues. Additionally, we had staff members working overtime this weekend to sweep up leaves and help prevent localized street flooding. Today, we've had four crew members in Snohomish County and four in King County side of the line responding to flooding and checking out different hotspots proactively, which we're really grateful for. I just want to point people to the city's website, bothellaw.gov. One of the news stories right now goes directly to Incliment Weather and Rain and Flooding page. It also has listed any active road closures, so if people want to check on that before they leave their home, they certainly can. And as you're out and about, please be safe. And if you do want to report flooding, there's a phone number on the website. It's 425-488-0118. Option one will help you report flooding. You can also... There's a link online to the public website to put in and alert our crews of where to look. So again, thank you to the community for responding, and thank you to our staff for being out and keeping people safe. With that, I'll wrap up, and we'll move forward.
Thank you. Next up is Council Committee Reports, Community Reports, and Conversations. Councilmembers? Councilmember Zorn?
Can we mix it up, or is it in that specific order?
I do not care what order it is.
I just want to... This is my time to showcase a hero, community hero, right? And there is a gentleman who lives on our hill. His name is Dale, and for the last three years, he has been at the Pioneer Cemetery, scrubbing up the headstones, the tombstones, and then just doing some great edging work, which you break a sweat doing that, because it's quite overgrown with grass and turf and things. So if you're at the Pioneer Cemetery and you notice how clean and tidy and edged it looks, it's a quiet hero that for several years has been in there cleaning up our cemetery.
Going once, going twice. All right, moving on to consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Councilmember Zorn?
Seconded.
I have a motion from Councilmember Zorn and a second from Councilmember Dodd to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I state your name. Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Packed with six zero with Councilmember McNeil absent.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Bill 23192, Public Hearing and Potential Action on the Comprehensive Plan 2023 Docket I, Amending the Future Land Use Designation Map from Residential R9600 to Downtown Transition District. And II, Text Amendments Establishing the Basis to Allow Middle Housing Types in All Predominantly Residential Zones. I am going to open the public hearing right now. Do I need to open both public hearings separately?
It's my understanding it's one public hearing. It's combined, so members of the public can speak to either category of comp plan amendment.
Perfect. And I should probably just assume you'll interrupt me if I do something procedurally incorrect.
I may remind you to close the hearing, as I already did.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, City Manager, Standard?
Thank you, Mayor. And tonight, we have a brief presentation by Community Development Director Jason Greenspan to walk through and get everything teed up and contextualized for the public hearing. What I do want to note is that many times, especially in the last year, when we've had public hearings, it has been for... just for feedback for the council. Tonight, I do want to specify that we are anticipating action at the end of the public hearing. So after Jason's presentation, we'll hear from the community, and then council members will be able to ask questions, deliberate, and again, we've been entertaining motion. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Standard. Good evening, Mayor Thompson, City Council Members, Jason Greenspan, Community Development Director for the city. Tonight, we are asking the city council to consider taking action on the 2023 docket as it relates to amending the city's comprehensive plan. Excellent. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is for the city council to consider and take final action on two matters for amending the comprehensive plan. Number one, to consider amending a portion of the future land use designation map from residential R9600 to the downtown transition district, which I'll refer to as the Drews Amendment. And number two, consider text amendments establishing the basis to allow middle housing types in all predominantly residential zones, which I'll refer to as the middle housing amendments. As mentioned for the order of business, I'll give a quick summary of that. I'll take about 10 minutes, hopefully a little bit less, to summarize the Drews Amendments. I'll also ask the applicants to address the city council directly and explain the basis for their request and offer them the opportunity to answer any questions. I'll then summarize the proposed text amendments that are related to middle housing, and then once that is complete, we can open it up to the public. Next slide. So first... Oh, actually, go back. First, talking about the Drews Amendment. This was first requested in October of 2021, and there are really three components to this request. First, the comprehensive plan amendment, which is what we're here for tonight, to amend the land use designation map in the comprehensive plan. The second component of that application, the site-specific rezoning, will be heard this evening once the comprehensive plan matter has been fully decided. And then third, were specific amendments to the zoning code regarding things like building height, setbacks, affordability incentives in the downtown transition zone. These are not being considered this evening, but can be scheduled during the first quarter of 2024, depending on tonight's outcome. The request from the Drews dates back to 2021, as I mentioned. On October, it was first docketed by the city council in February of 2022 and referred to the Planning Commission for their review as required by our code. That process of reviewing all three components of the application at the Planning Commission continued into 2023, when the council again placed this request on the 2023 docket. Importantly, when setting the 2023 docket, the Drews request was made distinct by the city council from another request that was submitted by Brett Carlson for a site-specific rezone for property along Hall Road. And just, I wanted to be clear that this matter is not being considered this evening, and that matter is currently inactive. Ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended support for all three components of the Drews request in July and October of 2023, which brings us to tonight. Next slide. So where are we talking about? The property in question is highlighted in blue on the map you see on the slide. It's located in the residential R9600 zone, which is adjacent to the downtown transition zone. That downtown transition zone is located to the east, and the R8400 residential zone is located to the west. The R9600 zone is also adjacent to the property. It's located due north and to the southwest. The property itself comprises about one acre with five parcels, and it's located at the intersection of Thor'sk and 96th Street. It's a wooded tract with wetland areas and steep slopes. In terms of adjacent land uses, there is multifamily to the east, southeast, and south in the downtown transition zone, and there's single-family detached residential development in the R9600 zone and the R8400 zones to the northwest and southwest. Next slide. So the Planning Commission reviewed all three components of the Drews application, and then in October of this year, the Planning Commission made certain findings and conclusions, which are in pages 257 through 263 of your packet, and they recommended that the city council adopt the comprehensive plan amendment. The Planning Commission noted several goals and policies in the land use and housing and human services elements of the comprehensive plan that support these amendments, and those include providing for the development first in areas already characterized by urban growth with existing and future public facility and service capacities, promoting an appropriate supply and mix of densities and housing types near and existing and planned transportation and employment centers, and striving to make affordable and special needs housing available throughout the city and especially in urban centers. Just wanted to pause on that for a moment. It's essential for me to clarify that certain planning commission recommendations and findings in Exhibit A that you have in your packet relate to the Drews requested zoning code amendments to accommodate a potential supportive future housing project. These recommendations and findings really are not germane to the requested comprehensive plan land use map amendment. There is no specific proposed project or use that's being considered by the city council or by staff at this time, even though the Drews application materials in your packet reference a future potential supportive housing project. So any requested zoning code amendments by the Drews that could support development of this future project could be presented for the council's consideration at a future date, depending on how the city council moves forward this evening. Next slide. Bothell's municipal code contains specific decision criteria, and that an applicant must show that amending the comprehensive plan should promote the public health, safety, and welfare, is consistent with or in conflict with other portions of the comprehensive plan or subarea plan, and complies with the applicable King County countywide planning policies. Next slide. I just wanted here to reference the stated purpose of the downtown transition district from the comprehensive plan. It defines areas of transitional development character between the denser downtown core and downtown neighborhood districts and adjacent lower-density existing residential neighborhoods. Next slide. The downtown transition district subarea plan is also very explicit about the purpose of the downtown transition district, where development within the downtown transition district will present the opportunity to live within a few minutes' walk of cafes, restaurants, entertainment, services, and transit, and it would also ideally provide a healthy mix of residential building types: townhomes, duplex homes, live-work buildings, small lot, single-family homes, flats, and courtyard types, which will widen the range of housing choices, complementing rather than competing with the city's suburban and single-family neighborhoods. With that, I'm going to pause and ask the applicants to please come to the lectern and explain the merits and the basis for your request.
So we are Dave and Connie Drews. We are Bothell residents, and we're also parents of a daughter with an intellectual disability. We're looking to develop an affordable, inclusive housing option for her and many others right here in Bothell. So according to the application, we are requesting that the five parcels be rezoned from the R9600 to the downtown transition affordable housing overlay for the following reasons. One, the primary access to these lots is from the downtown transition zone at 96th and Thor'sk. Number two, there's no practical access from 95th, which is above and to the north of the lots. Number three, three out of the four lots suitable for the single-family development included in the proposal fall under the required average lot size for the zone, implying that at some point, the site was intended for slightly more compact development than it is allowed today. Four, the adjacent properties, Park Royal Apartments and the Fieldhouse Townhomes, are zoned in the downtown transition zone. These properties are closer than the closest single-family residence. Number five, the proposed development for this property is consistent with the rest of the downtown transition zone to provide the opportunity to live within a few minutes' walk of cafes, restaurants, entertainment, services, and transit. And number six, the proposed development of this property is consistent with the 2021 King County countywide planning policies overarching goal: provide a full range of affordable, accessible, healthy, and safe housing choices to every resident in King County. All jurisdictions work to preserve, improve, and expand their housing stock, promote fair and equitable access to housing for all people, and take actions that eliminate race, place, ability, and income-based housing disparities. All comprehensive plans in King County combine to address the countywide need for housing affordable to households with low, very low, and extremely low incomes, including those with special needs, at a level that calibrates... level that calibrates with the jurisdiction's identified affordability gap for those households and results in combined comprehensive plans in King County, meeting countywide need. And lastly, number seven, an adjacent property has suggested including additional parcels and postponing this process. Considering the time we've invested in this, we kindly request that the evaluation of our application proceed as planned. The expansion of parcels to be evaluated can and should be decoupled from our current request. Thank you so much for your time.
This could be an opportunity for the city council to ask questions of the applicant, if that's appropriate at this stage.
Eileen Keefer, interim city attorney. That's perfectly fine.
Does anybody in council have any questions for the Drews? Looks like you get off easy today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I can move on to the second item on the docket this evening, which relates to middle housing, comprehensive plan text amendments. These comprehensive plan text amendments have been prepared to support housing goals included in the city's housing strategy, which was adopted by the city council in 2018, and to reflect state legislation. These text amendments have been reviewed by the Planning Commission at a study session, public hearing, and final deliberations, and they resulted in findings and conclusions and recommendations with specific text amendments that are included in your packet tonight, ordinance Exhibit C on pages 267 to 289. A public hearing on these comprehensive plan text amendments was conducted by the city council on July 11th of this year, and tonight, these text amendments are ready for your formal consideration and action. Updating the comprehensive plan tonight would set the policy basis for specific middle housing zoning code amendments at a future date. Since the Department of Commerce is going to be wrapping up their response to comments and their formal HB 1110 Middle Housing Guidance and Model Code by the end of January of 2024, we expect to be able to queue up those code amendments for city council action in March of 2024, depending on your action this evening. And also note that if the city council approves text amendments this evening, the 2024 overall comprehensive plan periodic update will take these into full account. And with that, we can open up to the public. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We had, we've received several written comments, and we have one person signed up to speak. So I'll review the written comments first. We received written comments from Mary Simons regarding the complaint amendments, Jonathan Lowndes, Kristin Joyner, Patrick Ewing, and Clayton Graham. And we also have Jonathan Lowndes here tonight to speak. Mr. Lowndes, if you'd like to go up to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jonathan Lowndes, and I'm here representing the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties, where we believe everybody deserves a place to call home. We want to express our strong support for the middle housing comprehensive plan amendments currently under consideration. We believe your support for these amendments is crucial in addressing the ongoing housing affordability crisis. Housing attainability remains a significant issue, with shortages persisting now and into the future. To tackle this problem effectively, increasing housing capacity in areas like Bothell is a practical solution. The proposed amendments align closely with recent actions taken by the Washington State Legislature. We believe it's essential for cities like Bothell to take a proactive measure in line with your current plan. We commend the city council, Planning Commission, and city staff for their dedicated efforts in addressing housing challenges. Your commitment to finding viable solutions is highly appreciated. We recognize the extensive public outreach efforts made during this process, which is commendable. In conclusion, we want to express our sincere gratitude for considering these amendments. We are ready to provide any additional information or assistance you may require to make informed decisions. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience here in chambers that wishes to speak to this matter? Mr. Swanson, if you'll step to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
The West Hill subarea of the comprehensive plan that we currently are supposed to be following states this. Natural environmental policies. Regulate development on hazardous slopes. Hazardous slopes. Is that like liquefaction risk is the West Hills identified as? Is it steep slopes? What is hazardous slopes? I don't know. Protect and preserve non-hazardous slopes in the subarea, consistent with the natural environment planning area-wide policies. What could those be? And this is what you people are impartially supposed to be adhering to. Impartially. That's in your oath of public office. These natural areas provide valuable erosion control, wildlife habitat, and visual relief from the built environment, and contribute to the character and identity of the subarea. Protect and preserve the wetlands within the subarea. So here we have part of the West Hill that's got steep slopes, identified as a danger to liquefaction, liquefaction risk. We know that there's this massive amount of sloped water hydrology that's going down the side of the hill, which is not for recharged area. We know it's got the same geologic stratigraphy as Norway Hill, being totally ignored. We know that there's deer up there. I mean, when we ought to stop tearing down these natural areas when the deer are finally completely and totally displaced? I mean, all of them? I suppose we can justify with weasel words, putting a concrete top on top of Mount Rainier and the surrounding cascades if we just get all the wildlife out of there with weasel words. I don't think you people are acting in interest of Bothell residents. I don't think you're acting in accordance with the law. It's my personal opinion. That's what's gone on in this city for the last two and a half years. It's a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. Not to exclude the fact that in dividing up the city council into the staff getaway, there is no quorum. There's no four people together at the same, yet you're making city decisions. I'm all for the Drews.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
But separate them from the DPAHO if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Your time is up. Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak? If not, I'll turn to the virtual audience. We have one person in the virtual audience that wishes to speak. I'm going to panel them in now. Mr. Lee, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. And again, thank you, city council members and city staff, for the opportunity to comment tonight. So just to be clear on who I am appearing, my name's Tom Lee, and I'm a subordinate and work with Clayton Graham, who was also mentioned, because we're attorneys at Davis Wright Tremaine, the law firm that represents a couple named the Covilles, who are neighbors with the Drews. And we're here tonight because we represent the, sorry, we represent the Covilles with regards to land use decision-making and concerns they have. In short, again, I, you know, very limited time here. I appreciate the thoroughness that the city and city staff are putting into this, but in context with the letter we submitted earlier today, the big take from our client's perspective is that we all feel strongly it would be premature tonight for the city to advance a, not just advance this application, but advance decision on this application. In short, what's being proposed tonight is a spot rezone that, you know, even while us lawyers can, especially us dirt lawyers, you know, can promulgate a number of different arguments for, I think the citizen comments that I've reviewed highlighting concerns and various opposition put it best in that we're not looking, is that many of these citizens, just like our clients, aren't concerned about the actual trend, about the actual rezoning occurring, but they're concerned about it occurring out of context or without proper thought and do care there. Again, in reviewing those public concerns, those really highlight why I'm here tonight at the behest of my clients, which is, we don't feel that a spot rezone of the Drews property that's being proposed would benefit the area or adequately account for the factors affecting the entire row of lots due north from where the Drews parcels lie, which include my clients. Without a simultaneous, sorry, rezone of my client's property and that section of R9600 properties, zone properties that are just due north of the Drews application tonight, we feel that this would be a spot rezoning that may not accomplish ultimately what put forward tonight, what the city council and the citizens want to see. So again, for those reasons, we urge you to table consideration tonight and consider our client's similar application for a rezone and comp plan amendment, and then return to it. Again, not opposed to it in principle, but just simply take a little more time, pump the brakes, and once we have everyone look at it in the big picture.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the virtual audience wish to speak? Please raise your hand. That is all I have.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Would anybody like to make a motion? The recommended actions are up at the top. We totally can have questions. Would you like questions? All right, let's do questions. Castle Resilience?
Yeah, I have some questions. Huge packet, so I apologize if there's confusion, because I did a lot of flipping back and forth. I think this is about specifically to the Drews project. The stream and wetland, I noticed that it's not on the GIS system right now. Will it be at some point?
We continually update layers for our GIS program and rely primarily on information provided by state agencies. So it's entirely possible, especially as we get more data that the stream segment that's shown on this property would be included in the city's GIS system.
Okay. So it's, I could have asked it better, I suppose. Is it an ongoing process? And yes, it is. It's what you've said. Then my other question is, because, one, it was fascinating to read the geological study of that, and it was fun to revisit some, you know, old geology that, you know, just basic geology of the area that everybody kind of looks at. I'm assuming everybody does. For this kind of property, how is the slide-prone area mitigated? I have to ask that question.
That is something that would happen during project review. Once we have a design, the applicant would be required to really do a much more specific analysis of the site's geology, as well as other critical areas like wetlands and wetland buffers. We have some preliminary analysis, which is included in your packet, but that would have to be evaluated based on a development proposal, an actual application for development, and then we would have to see what the impacts are on those areas and to decide the appropriate mitigation. But it is part of the review.
And there is a general feeling that it can be mitigated?
I wouldn't be able to represent that. I would have to see a specific project, but that would be the case for anything regardless of the zoning. We would have to look at the impacts on those resources and whether the project proposal could be supported.
Okay. Well, I was impressed with how much labor the Drews have put in to research on this. So I'm assuming that if they got counsel that it wasn't going to fly, they would have pulled the plug on the project a while ago. That's, but it would be a shame to get this far and then realize you couldn't do it. And then, I was looking at a liquefaction map earlier. How, and I thought I saw it was around 240th and 527. How close is this to the liquefaction zone that's?
I don't have that information for you this evening. We do have some information in the packet that shows a layer available from our GIS mapping.
Right.
That has this, the scarps and flanks layer that shows that there is some area here that was part of a historic landslide.
Right.
But in terms of liquefaction, I really don't have the information to share with you.
Okay.
Its location compared to other spots.
I was hoping you knew, because it was really small print, and I was, it seemed like it was far enough away, but I was hoping you'd have the answer for my curiosity. All right, I think I'll skip that question. Can I go over to the Bothell vision statement? I'll give you an opinion that I have on it on page 267. This is me sour graping, because as I was going through this, I felt that a lot of Bothell's soul and heart had been purged from descriptions of the neighborhoods. You know, when we went into each, when each neighborhood was discussed, it was so sterile of humanity. Boy, that's a lot of drama, isn't it? I'm sorry. That, I just thought, as if I were a developer, I'd be like, this is great. But if I lived in Bothell, I'd be like, we're nothing. Each neighborhood, I would feel like that we lost a lot of our special things that make us neighborhoods. And I had one idea I wanted to toss out is on the vision statement where it is, it's crossed out, protect neighborhoods from intrusion by incompatible uses. Keeping that and adding the word with or by with the phrase that's added that comes after it. Protect neighborhoods from intrusion by incompatible uses with facilitating a range of new housing types and infill development. It just, it just felt like if we were to keep that language in there, neighborhoods would know that they have, protection is something that the city values for neighborhoods, and we're going to do it with the changes that we're putting in here. I don't know if that makes sense, or if anybody, if that resonates with anyone. But it made sense to me. Protect neighborhoods from intrusion by incompatible uses with facilitating a range of new housing types, et cetera. That's my suggestion there. And then, another question on page 298. Don't go to it. It's just my reference. I saw that it was five or more units require 10% affordability put on them. What happens when the units are just five to nine units? Because it's not.
Sorry, just skipping add to that.
Yeah, it's at the bottom of page 298. With at least 10% of the number of new dwelling units created within a development shall be affordable. I just thought it'd be pretty hard to do 10% of nine units or eight.
Oh, that'd be considered like a fractional
Right.
unit. And I'd have to research exactly how the city has addressed that in the past. Often, there's a contribution in lieu.
Okay, that's what I was, I was looking for a reference on that. And that's what would happen.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's it. That's all I have on that. Thank you. Oh, wait, one other thing. You listed things that were not part of this discussion. You said height. You just, you said height. What else is not being discussed tonight?
So any of the amendments to the code, the zoning code that were requested by the Drews. So any of the amendments to the code, the zoning code that were requested by the Drews are not on this evening's hearing. So that would be regulations for height setbacks, affordability incentives, parking, what we would typically refer to as bulk requirements or zoning regulations. We wanted to make sure that we separated those out and that you could review the merits of the comp plan request on its own. Since those often are, um, project related, um, we wanted to separate those out.
Okay.
Those would be depending on your deliberations this evening and your decision in the future date.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. Um, I actually don't have any questions. I really appreciate the time that staff in our community, um, have dedicated to this through various public hearings and different types of engagement. I did just want to call out though, that I really appreciate, um, the Drews family for sticking with us for two years and plus, as this has gone through the process. I know that's a long time. And I'm glad that we were able to, to discuss this tonight and, and just get you to the next stage, whatever that may be, because it, I just wanted to call out that it's been a long time. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Roldaux?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for the presentation tonight and kind of, you know, recapping a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of community engagement. And so you are, you're describing that the next step of the project, um, like first we have to make changes to the comprehensive plan, which then gives us permission to look more in det, more in depth at individual projects and what the kind of parameters are of that according to the code. And so when, hopefully I characterize that accurately. And so the next step is then to do exactly what you just said, which is look at the rezoning and, and aspects of the code. When is that projected to come back to council?
The rezone is actually on this evening's docket for, um, depending on the decision on the comprehensive plan. Those code changes, again, I would want to clarify that, you know, a project does not come to the city council. It wouldn't be something where you're evaluating a specific project, but you would be evaluating the amendments that would inform how that project is designed. Um, those have been workshop with planning commission extensively. And that's something that could happen the first quarter of 2024, um, if not sooner. Um, I would want to just make sure that, um, we have another look at it because it has been some time. Uh, and we have made at least one code amendment, um, a couple of months ago with shorelines. And I would just want to make sure that there is no technical issue with how we amended the code. Um, I don't think there's a, there's not a connection there necessarily, but I would want to give it one more, um, look to make sure that it's ready.
Great. I really appreciate that and the, the care and attention that you're giving, um, giving all aspects of this. So thank you.
I don't have any other questions. I'd just like to echo some of the comments from my council members. I appreciate the patience of the Drews and their willingness to kind of see this through a, a long and winding road. Um, and appreciate your and staff work on helping us get to this point where we can, where we can see what the next step will be. Councilmember Dodd?
I move to approve all proposed comprehensive plan amendments.
And may I second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Roldaux to approve all proposed comprehensive plan amendments. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmember Manki?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a minor amending motion to the motion on the floor. Um, I would move that we, to Councilmember Zorn's, um, point in which I'll discuss if I can get a second. Um, I move that we would update some minor language on page one, or sorry, page 267, uh, specifically the Bothell vision statement, section seven, um, to unstrike the language that states, protect neighborhoods from intrusion by incompatible uses. Um, second part would be adding, um, residential between protect and neighborhoods, um, and then adding the word and between that phrase and the new phrase stating facilitate a range of new housing types and infill development compatible with scale of existing neighborhoods and their environment. And again, if I can get a second, I would like to speak to that.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Manki and a second from Councilmember Zorn's. And Councilmember Manki would like to speak to his motion.
Great, thank you. To Councilmember Zorn's point, I think it's important to continue to protect, protect residential neighborhoods from incompatible uses. These updates are stating and we're establishing that residential housing, regardless of type, is residential housing and it's a compatible use. I don't, I don't think we would dispute that. I think we want to, um, increase availability. So I have zero issue with that part. I think the part that's important is protecting residential neighborhoods from things that we would all agree are incompatible uses, such as a gas station in the middle of a neighborhood or a tire recycling facility, or something that is potentially unhealthy or unsafe, um, that would bring that into a neighborhood or residential neighborhood, are things that we want, do want to keep out. So, um, I would like to keep this language in, adding the and clarifying residential neighborhood and, and including that new language to indicate that housing is housing and that's not what we're trying to, um, keep out of, of our neighborhoods.
All right. I have something to say, so I'm going to go out of order real fast because you look very pensive, Councilmember Dodd. Um, I have absolutely no issue with the spirit of this. Like, we don't want to put like a smelter in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And I totally get that. Um, I would love it if there was a way that we could get staff to workshop this and rephrase it to speak positively to what we allow instead of negatively to what's not there. So like, if there's a way that we can phrase it just a little bit differently to talk about the wonderful vision we have for these neighborhoods rather than keep the riffraff out, I would be a lot more comfortable with that because that language has historically been used to exclude. Um, and I understand that's not your intent completely. Um, I'm just not super comfortable with it as it's phrased, but the intent of what you're saying is fantastic and I have no problem with it. So how would you feel about kind of asking staff to bring us back another option with that rephrasing in there?
I guess procedurally, I'm not sure how that would work. I don't want to delay a vote tonight on something and have staff come back. So I don't know, um, if we would, okay, I'll defer to.
No, I was going to ask the same, the, for the same clarification. I know we are in the middle of the comprehensive plan updates, the, the larger one. And so I don't know, Jason, I'd turn to you, but, but one way of maybe looking at that is, is if you adopt tonight, putting that on the list of updating the language and the overall comprehensive plan update, that would be one way of facilitating that. But, um, and receiving that as direction of having staff bring that back with the updates, that may be a minor amendment to your, to your motion of directing future language, if it was to not hold up or depending on if anybody is a creative writer on the fly, but I am always reluctant to do that.
Well, I think you're, you're definitely a step ahead of me. I did speak today, um, and confirmed with, um, Kirsten Mann, our project manager on the comprehensive plan update, that she has reviewed this text. And, um, if you recall, we are kind of transitioning from a vision statement when we do the full update to more of a, um, goals and policies, um, section that's a little more abbreviated. That could be the space to, to capture this and we will be revisiting and workshopping that with city council, um, once again in February of 2024. Um, and, um, probably coming to you with some final suggested language. And there's a way, depending on your feelings about that, how to capture what you're talking about at, at that time. But, um, that's the city council's decision, but, um, we will be amending the vision statement to have a much more concise message under guiding principles, I should say.
Okay, thank you. I, I would be willing to withdraw my amending motion. But I would like to first check with the other individual on the dais that had the same concerns, as long as we're able to bring it back in the future without losing the ability to do that or losing sight of that, um, knowing that it is important to some of us up here. So I would like to ask if it's okay procedurally to.
Get my feedback on it?
Yes.
Yeah. I was, you know, as long as there's a guarantee that we're, we will see that and, and the spirit of what we're asking isn't, isn't, uh, lost, uh, in the introduction. If I'm understanding you correctly, you want to make the vision statement really short and concise. It, that's the priority.
It's to have it concise, um, and obviously now very much reflective of the city council's wishes.
Right.
So I think we can, um, put on our creative writing hats.
Yeah, somewhere upfront, when eyes are first laying on the document, they, they, they read the intent of, of what we're asking you of here. So, you know, as long as there's a guarantee that we'll get another, we'll get another, um, swipe at this, another chance to work on this, I'm fine with it.
Great. Hearing that there is support for a change of language, maybe not bringing you back what's there, but working on it at a later time, I will do a friendly withdraw of my amendment.
Again, Eileen Kiefer, interim city attorney, just looking at your protocol manual, just to refresh your memories, uh, anyone making a motion has the right to modify or withdraw until, um, it's been, the question's been stated, the mayor has stated the question. So if there are no objections, you can absolutely withdraw the amendment. Uh, if there are objections, then council will need to vote on it.
Any objections? I see no objections. All right. Motion is drawn. Would you like to speak to the main motion?
No.
Okay. Because I believe we have a main motion on the floor right now. What did you?
I wanted to share with councilmembers Manki and Zorn's that I support the idea there and I, I, I'm appreciative that we're going to tackle that with our bigger comprehensive plan update. But that, I really appreciate that we need to find the balance of making sure that our language is not so loose that it can be used to promote exclusion and that housing is compatible with housing, but also that we know our neighborhoods where we all live, most of us live in across the city, right? From north to south. And that they all know that we also care about our neighborhoods and where we live and where each other live. So I, I appreciate that we found a good spot there. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. I believe we have a main motion on the floor. Would anybody like to speak to the main motion? To approve all proposed comprehensive plan amendments. All right. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn's?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yep.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent.
Fantastic. Um, next up, we are moving to agenda bill 23193. Oh, I thought you were going to stick around. Otherwise I would have said, thank you.
I'll probably be back pretty soon.
Okay. Good deal. Um, agenda bill 23193, public hearing and potential action on proposed rezone from residential R 9,600 to downtown transitional affordable housing overlay, or as we say, de Tahoe, the quote unquote Drews rezone. City Manager?
And I think in this case, we'll go directly to, to the process. So I thought I'll kick it over to interim city attorney.
Again, interim city attorney, Eileen Kiefer. Mayor Thompson, this is the perfect time to switch to your quasi judicial Drews rezone script.
All right. Fantastic. The purpose of this agenda item is for the city council to review and take action on the site specific rezone applied for by the Drews for five parcels. As this is a quasi judicial proceeding, it is handled differently than other matters the city council routinely discusses. I will first go over the order of operations for this matter. At the start of the hearing, as this is a quasi judicial matter, we will begin by swearing in all witnesses wishing to provide testimony. Then the interim city attorney will ask the council members the appearance of fairness questions. After each council member has responded to these questions, the public will have the opportunity to present challenges. This is the time to bring forward information or inquiries related to whether each council member is in a position to make a fair and unbiased decision on this matter. If you would like to raise a challenge, please either step forward to the podium or use the virtual raise hand option in the Zoom interface to indicate that you would like to speak. The city clerk will call on each person bringing forward a challenge. After the appearance of fairness process, we will open the topic to take public testimony. Members of the public wishing to testify on the proposed rezone will have the opportunity to do so tonight. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. After three minutes, you will be asked to conclude your testimony and no extensions of time will be provided. This will allow everyone a chance to speak. The timer on the podium will count down your three minutes and will turn red when your three minutes are complete. Those wishing to testify but not using all of their three minutes may not donate their time to another individual wishing to testify. Following public comments, we will hear from the proponents of the proposal. Then city staff will present a report and lay out the decision criteria. Project proponents and staff will then have an opportunity to present any rebuttal if needed. At that point, the council will commence deliberations. We will now swear in the witnesses who will testify in this proceeding. Would all applicants, city staff and other persons wishing to testify tonight, please stand and raise your right hand? You guys are applicants. Do you promise to tell the truth in these proceedings? If so, please respond, "I do." Thank you. You may be seated. Interim city attorney, will you please ask each member of the city council the appearance of fairness questions?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Counsel, um, I will now be asking the full counsel, a series of the appearance of fairness questions. We'll be doing this one by one. The order in which I'm going to proceed is the mayor, then the deputy mayor, and then I'll take you in alphabetical order. So, uh, councilmembers Zorn's, you get to go last. So with that, Mayor Thompson, are you ready to answer the appearance of fairness questions?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any interest in the property or the application or own property within 300 feet of the property subject to the proposal?
No.
Does your employer have an interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Is there any prospective employment for you or a member of your family as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Do you have any familial, social or business relationships or connections with any of the parties or non-parties who have an interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Do you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Have you engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the proposal?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Please disclose these ex parte communications.
So, um, during, um, the campaign this year, I was up for election. Um, I doorbailed on West Hill and adjoining neighborhoods and had a variety of conversations with neighbors near there, as well as the Carlson project, um, that was, uh, down the road. I do not remember any specific conversations, um, as to the site specific rezone, but I had lots of discussions around the overall, um, proposal. And so because there were so many communications, even though I don't remember a particular one, I want to make sure that I get that on the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, there, there are two more.
Okay.
That I have here. Um, the other one is that, uh, also during my campaign, um, I spoke with the Drews and had a conversation with them as well. And, um, again, I do not recall any conversation about the quasi judicial matter that we are discussing. It was more of a general conversation around the project itself. Um, but I want to make sure I get that on the record as well. Um, and then, um, I have seen comments on various social media platforms, um, related to the two projects. And that's all I could think of and come up with.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so Mayor, are you confident that in spite of this communication, that you can impartially render a decision tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And then the final question is, can you hear and consider the proposal tonight in a fair and objective manner?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, are you ready?
Let's go.
Excellent. Thank you. Do you have any interest in the property or the application or own property within 300 feet of the property subject to the proposal?
No.
Does your employer have an interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Is there any prospective employment for you or a member of your family as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Do you have any familial, social or business relationships or connections with any of the parties or non-parties who have an interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Do you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Have you engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the proposal?
Uh, yes, similar as position, uh, members of our community have reached out to us about this and the Carson project before. And I had in August a conversation with a couple of folks. And I had in August a conversation with a couple of folks, not about this particular decision we're about to make here, but in general also about de Tahoe and affordability in the city and these kind of things.
Are you confident that in spite of these communications, that you can impartially render a decision tonight?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. In spite of the communications you've disclosed, are you confident that you can impartially render a decision on the proposal?
Yes.
And then finally, the final question, can you hear and consider the proposal tonight in a fair and objective manner?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Alderks, you're up. You ready?
Yes, I am. Go ahead.
Okay. Do you have any interest in the property or the application or own property within 300 feet of the property subject to the proposal?
No.
Does your employer have an interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Is there any prospective employment for you or a member of your family as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Do you have any familial, social, or business relationships or connections with any of the parties or non-parties who have an interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Do you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Have you engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the proposal?
Yes, similar to other council members. Can I detail them for you?
Yes, please.
Okay. In early 2022, the Drews did ask to meet with me during my office hours. And they described the project to me. This was before study sessions, even when we're at the planning commission. And we didn't discuss the quasi judicial matter at that meeting. And then other members of the community have talked to me about the broader de Tahoe area and the Carlson project and shared some shared thoughts and feedback with me on those conversations, kind of more broadly related to the area.
Okay. And in spite of those communications, are you confident that you can impartially render a decision?
Yes.
And then finally, can you hear and consider the proposal tonight in a fair and objective manner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Dodd, are you ready?
Yes.
Do you have any interest in the property or the application or own property within 300 feet of the property subject to the proposal?
No.
Does your employer have an interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Is there any prospective employment for you or a member of your family as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Do you have any familial, social, or business relationships or connections with any of the parties or non-parties who have an interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Do you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Have you engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the proposal?
Yes, and I'm happy to detail them.
Please disclose those.
Yes. So aside from being active on Facebook and Nextdoor and seeing comments here and there that I think pretty universally pertained to the code amendments, not the quasi judicial matter at hand, I also met on January 10th with two residents who had concerns about the now inactive Carlson project. And again, upon the advice of literally the entire city staff, we talked only about code amendments and not about the quasi judicial matter.
Okay. And so are you confident that you can impartially render a decision in spite of these communications?
Yes.
And then finally, can you hear and consider the proposal tonight in a fair and objective manner?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Manki, are you ready?
I am.
Do you have any interest in the property or the application or own property within 300 feet of the property subject to the proposal?
I do not.
Does your employer have an interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome of this proceeding?
They do not.
Is there any prospective employment for you or a member of your family as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Do you have any familial, social, or business relationships or connections with any of the parties or non-parties who have an interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay. Can you please disclose those?
I can. I was contacted by the Drews in early January, January 25th, 2023 via email. They introduced themselves. We exchanged a couple of back and forth about potentially meeting in person to discuss their project, but we ultimately decided not to meet on the advice from both sides. So knowing this could potentially come before council, the decision was made not to meet. We also have a mutual acquaintance. Through, I know them through my church. I went on a missions trip with them and their family. And one of the children has an intellectual disability, so they potentially may have an opportunity to move into the building if the building does go through. But this individual and their family, I haven't talked to them for probably a couple of years now. And we are Facebook friends, but you know, Facebook friends are Facebook friends. They're not necessarily close. So I don't have any relationship with them really anymore, other than they reached out to me over a year ago and said, hey, you know, we know a family who's trying to do a project in Bothell. Would you be open to them reaching out to you?
Thank you. Do you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
I do not.
Okay. And have you engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the proposal other than what you've previously disclosed?
I've received the same messages as other council members from the public commenting. I think the most recent one was over the weekend. A couple of council members received an email concerning mostly code changes, things that are not before council tonight. I responded back that I had some questions as well, and then they responded to me saying they found out that it was not being discussed tonight. And I said, I realized the same thing. I learned the same thing. And that was the end of that conversation.
Okay. And so are you confident that in spite of these communications, that you can impartially render a decision tonight?
I can.
And then finally, can you hear and consider the proposal tonight in a fair and objective manner?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, councilmember Zornz?
Light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes. I'm actually glad I don't have to do this seven times tonight. Do you have any interest in the property or the application or own property within 300 feet of the property subject to the proposal?
No.
Does your employer have an interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Is there any prospective employment for you or a member of your family as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Do you have any familial, social, or business relationships or connections with any of the parties or non-parties who have an interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
I do.
Okay, please disclose.
They are longtime family friends, Liz and Bruce Myers. I think we've got a letter from them tonight. Would you like me to disclose the conversation we had?
We can get that to ex parte communications.
Yes, but yes, they have a daughter with an intellectual disability.
Do you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Have you engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the proposal?
Yes, this summer I got a call from Liz asking about what I recommended to help this project go through. And I was pretty useless. I said, the only suggestion that I had was to talk with the neighbors and be all on the same page. As far as I know, she never followed through on that conversation. And that's the sum total of what we talked about on this.
Okay. In spite of those communications, are you confident that you can impartially render a decision?
Yes.
And then finally, can you hear and consider the proposal tonight in a fair and objective manner?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, interim city attorney. Sorry. Can we take a break and pause right here before we continue?
We can take a recess. That's fine.
How much time? Okay, we are going to recess for 15 minutes. It is 7:28 PM. 15 minutes would be 7:43. We will be back. Sorry, took me a minute.
Recording stopped.
Yep. All right. Welcome back.
Recording in progress.
I'm going to give a moment for the general merriment to stop and everybody to get seated. Seemed like people were having fun. All right, now I'm going to ask for potential challenges from those who wish to challenge participation of decision makers on the appearance of fairness grounds, including reason for the challenge. Thank you, interim city attorney. Does anyone in attendance wish to challenge the participation of any council member based on appearance of fairness doctrine? If so, please step up to the podium. If you are reviewing the meeting on Zoom, please use the virtual raise hand feature located at the bottom of the Zoom interface. Select raise hand. The host will then see that you have your hand raised and can invite you to speak. When called upon, please state the name of the member and the reasons why you think they should be disqualified from this matter. Please remember, we are not taking public testimony at this point in the evening, so please limit your statements to only any reasons you believe a council member should be disqualified. We will hear all challenges first before any challenged council member will have an opportunity to respond to such challenge. Challenges are not an opportunity to ask questions of the city council members, and we would ask that those making challenges succinctly state the reasons supporting such challenge. Yeah. City clerk?
Do you want to call to see if anybody? What's that? We don't have anybody online that wishes to challenge. Mr. Swanson? Go ahead and step to the podium.
As of September 5th, 2023, the Facebook group Bothellites for People Oriented Places listed as amongst their members, Kerry Westerbeck of the Planning Commission, and other planning commissioners, five of seven at minimum. Here tonight, we have former and current members of BOPOP, Bothellites for People Oriented Places. And four of the seven council members are BOPOP members.
Mr. Swanson, we've asked for you to please state the name of the council members and the reasons why you believe they should be disqualified.
Is one of the founding members of BOPOP. Amanda Dodd is one of the founding members of BOPOP. Rami Alcabra is listed as a member of BOPOP on September 25th, as is Jenny Alderks, founding member of BOPOP. Not a founding member, a member of BOPOP as listed on September 25th. In a planning council, no, a city council discussion, Amanda Dodd admitted that she was a member of BOPOP. She did not admit she's a founding member. And she said she'd resigned from BOPOP, whatever that means. Don't know what it means. Jenny Alderks stated that she had discussed her membership of BOPOP with the city attorney at the time, and the city attorney did not discourage her from staying with the organization. Rami Alcabra, he's just simply listed. Mayor Mason Thompson is a founding member of BOPOP. Founding member. Both Mayor Thompson and Amanda Dodd have maintained their relationship with founding member of BOPOP, Kerry Westerbeck, who I affectionately refer to as Fabio Westerbeck. So Kerry Westerbeck states.
Mr. Swanson, we're talking about council members tonight.
Yes, we are.
Limit your statements to any reasons you believe a council member should be disqualified.
You belong to BOPOP and are founding members, which the founder of BOPOP has stated that they, he is aggressively with the BOPOP members trying to reverse the culture in this city. To my knowledge, there's no declaration of conflict of interest have been filed with the city. And nobody, none of the four, have disavowed this conflict of interest where they're trying to increase urban density, and that's against the comprehensive plan. So I challenge that there is no social advantage. I challenge the veracity of their responses. And I also challenge that there is a quorum present in these halls that are sufficiently free of conflict of interest without a disavowal or a public declaration and then published by the city. That there's a conflict of interest with our comprehensive plan and the Bothell for People Oriented Places goals for the city. And I think this conflict of interest has existed for at minimum four years. In my opinion, the downtown housing, affordable housing overlay, both the basic one and the voluntary incentive cannot be voted on by this city council because of this conflict of interest that provides them not only social benefit, but financial benefit from ignorant institutions that support them. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this? Not seeing anybody.
Fantastic. Let me make sure. All right, we will now turn, actually, city attorney, I have a question. We asked for challenges based on appearance of fairness grounds. Did we hear that in the challenge, do you think?
So he we did have a challenge on the impartiality of four council member or the mayor and three council members tonight. So I think the appropriate thing is to go through the procedure where the challenged council members will have an opportunity to respond to the challenge. And then I can ask you follow up questions about appearance of fairness and whether or not you all, either any of you will recuse yourselves from the proceeding based on the content of the challenge raised tonight.
Okay. We will. Mr. Swanson, your time to speak is up. All right. So it says councilmember X. I was going to start with me. So should I ask myself that I have been challenged from participating in this matter, and I do wish to respond?
Go ahead, Mayor.
I don't feel any need to recuse myself from this proceeding. Is there more detail that I need to give, or would that be useful?
So it's not, it's not up to me as to whether anyone recuses themselves. For, for council members' challenge, it can be helpful to explain, you know, why they will not be recusing if that's their choice, or if they're recusing, why that is their choice. Basically, it's just a chance to speak to the allegations you heard tonight to the challenge on appearance of fairness. So if you feel you can speak objectively to the decision tonight, if you can make a fair decision. And I will be again asking follow up appearance of fairness questions to the four challenged members.
Perfect. No, I'm in a lot of Facebook groups, especially Facebook groups that are Bothell specific because I like to keep my ear to the ground and know what's going on in the city. And I'm in lots of Facebook groups with lots of people who say and do things that I agree with and/or don't. I don't feel the need to recuse myself from the proceedings, and I believe I can handle this matter fairly. All right. Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
The BOPOP is a Facebook group. How many here are not a member of a Facebook group? Both the community, I'm a member of that. There was a post today about salsa dancing. I'm not a salsa dancer. Does that mean I need to not be on that group because I don't like salsa dancing? No. So I'm on that group. I'm on BOPOP. I don't feel like there's anything wrong with being on a Facebook group. It's Facebook, for God's sake.
Councilmember Alderks?
I do not wish to respond. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thanks. I'm going to admit that I'm struggling to understand the challenge. I am not a member of the BOPOP Facebook group. Mr. Westerbeck started the group in late 2018. Mr. Westerbeck started the group in late 2018, early 2019. I went to meetings for about a year. And then when I was appointed to the Planning Commission, there was already a commissioner in the group, and people were interested because it was about land use in Bothal, which I don't know how often everybody hangs out online, but not a lot happening in that space on social media. So I left the Facebook group and went on a couple of housing walks after that. I don't know that I understand, again, the nexus of where that becomes a conflict of interest, but I have not been a member of it, either as a planning commissioner or as a council member. So I do not feel that I have a conflict of interest today. Thank you.
Interim City Attorney, are you going to follow up with appearance of fairness questions?
Sure, and they are, they will be very brief.
All right.
We'll be glad to hear. We'll start with you, Mayor. Mayor, you heard the challenge raised to your participation in this matter tonight. You have responded to that challenge. Do you continue to believe that you can hear and consider the proposal tonight in a fair, unbiased, and objective manner?
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Mayor? You heard the challenge raised to your participation in this matter tonight. In spite of this challenge, do you still continue to believe that you can hear, consider the proposal in a fair, unbiased, and objective manner?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs? You heard the challenge levied against your participation in this matter tonight. In light of that challenge, do you continue to believe that you can hear and consider the proposal in a fair, unbiased, and objective manner tonight?
Yes.
And then finally, Councilmember Dodd? You heard the challenge raised against your participation in this matter tonight. You responded to that challenge. Do you continue to believe that you can hear and consider the proposal in a fair, unbiased, and objective manner tonight?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then finally, this is, this is to the entire council. Having heard all of the challenges and all of the responses, do any council members feel they need to recuse themselves from further participation in this matter tonight? I'm hearing none. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, interim City Attorney. Public testimony for the proposed Drews rezone is now open. We will now ask for members of the public to present testimony. Members of the public, if you wish to testify, please raise your physical hand, or if joining remotely, please raise your virtual hand. City staff will call on all of those with hands raised and tell all those who wish to testify have done so. Please remember to state your name, confine your remarks to the matter at hand, and that you have a time limit of three minutes. The timer on the podium will alert you when your time limit has expired. City Clerk?
I do not have anybody in the virtual, oh, I do, actually. We're going to move Robert Lee in. Oh, no, you're fine. Mr. Lee, can you hear us? Mr. Lee, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you for your patience.
Yep. Go ahead. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Again, Tom Lee. And I just wanted to reiterate my previous comments on behalf of the Covells and the law firm, which I'm part of, that we represent them in. And thank you to this council for your consideration, to our perspectives. No further comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the virtual audience that wishes to speak? Please use the raise your hand function. We have one more. Teja Desari, just a moment.
Right, can everyone hear me? Is this like-
Teja, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Sorry, this is-
Can, can you state your name for the record, and you can start over?
Sure, got it. My name is, sorry, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, City Staff, and esteemed members of the public in attendance. Good evening. My name is Teja Desari. I am currently stuck at home due to this warlock weather I wish I could have attended. And I'm a Uta Bothal freshman who has been regularly attending the city council and observe the behavior of city council as well as hearing the responses to the prior questions. I would like to testify on public record that I trust, believe, and am confident in city council's ability, or the members of city councils, city council tonight, their ability to use their valuable insights to be impartial, act in a fair and respectful manner to all parties involved in the decision-making process regarding the proposed Drews rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the, anybody else in the virtual audience wishes to speak to this matter? I don't see anybody else. Is there anyone in the audience here tonight that wishes to speak? Mr. Swanson, please step to the podium. You'll have three minutes.
Personally, I like the Drews proposal. I want to see them succeed as quickly as possible because they've already run through too many hoops. I think they've adequately demonstrated to the council and the Bothal community that their development does nothing really very severe to our environment. What I do object to is the means by which city staff, the planning commission, and this city council is choosing to cherry pick our current comprehensive plan for benefit of the Drews, who deserve that consideration. But we have to stay within the law. And currently, the comprehensive plan prohibits their development. Which brings me, why, to the point that I think the council needs to do their very best to divorce the Drews proposal from the downtown affordable housing overlay. And the downtown affordable housing overlay voluntary incentive zone changes, which almost certainly, if I can figure out a way to do it, will be challenged in court to be deficient in process because of not only the appearance of fairness doctrine, but the Bothal municipal code and the GPMA. So I recommend that the council, even though, in my opinion, this is not a legal quorum tonight in the city council because of the conflict of interest, inadequately addressed, in my opinion, by the four city council members that have a conflict of interest. I recommend that option three, not option four, divorce the Drews from any overriding zoning extension of DTA HO so that their project will not be mired in the lawsuit that I intend to bring upon the city and the city councilmen if I can find a way to do it without becoming personally liable.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. That is all I have. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. We will now ask the rezoned applicants to speak on the proposal. If the Drews, if you would like to come up, you're welcome to, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Some of this is, seems somewhat repetitive, but it's what we have to say. So according to the proposal to rezone, we're asking that it be rezoned from R 9600 to the downtown transition affordable housing overlay for the following reasons. The primary access to these lots is from the downtown transition zone at 96th and Dorisk. There's no practical access from 95th, which is above into the north. And three out of the four lots suitable for single-family development included in the proposal fall under the required average lot size for the zone, implying that at some point, the site was intended for slightly more compact development than is allowed today. And the adjacent properties, Park Royal Apartments and the Fieldhouse Townhomes, are zoned in the downtown transition zone. These properties are closer than the closest single-family residence. And lastly, the proposed development for this property is consistent with the rest of the downtown transition zone to provide the opportunity to live within a few minutes' walk of cafes, restaurants, entertainment, services, and transit. So for these reasons, we ask that it be rezoned to be consistent with the rest of the downtown transition affordable housing overlay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We will now ask city staff to please present the staff report on the project or proposal.
Mayor, and real quickly, I don't believe we ever closed the public testimony period. So just a friendly reminder.
I will close the public testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson, city council members. Jason Greenspan, Community Development Director. The requested action is for the city council to modify the zone classification of the subject property from residential R 9600 to downtown transition zone with an affordable housing overlay. As you can see on this map, the subject parcel is shown in blue outline. This is the second component of the Drews amendments, which I referred to earlier, where the applicant has requested his own designation to downtown transition. Staff is also recommending the affordable housing overlay be applied to the site, as it is for all other downtown transition zone sites along the western border of this district. The Bothal municipal code currently requires all developments within this overlay creating five or more dwelling units to provide for affordable housing units within the development with at least 10% affordable to moderate-income households. This existing overlay would be then extended and applied to the site. The Bothal municipal code has one criterion for the city council to cite when considering site-specific rezon. The requested rezon classification must be found to be consistent with and implement the land use designation provided in the imagined Bothal comprehensive plan for the subject property or properties. So in this case, based on the action taken by city council tonight, changing the land use designation from R 9600 to downtown transition with an affordable housing overlay would be consistent with and would implement the comprehensive plan. That's my report for this evening.
The rezoned applicants have an opportunity to rebut the staff presentation if you should so choose. I'm guessing that you would not like to. So city council deliberations is up next. Thank you, Director Greenspan. Is there any discussion of this matter or questions for staff or the proponents up here on the dais? All right. Oh, Councilmember Zornz?
Can I direct it to the project folks here? I just, it sounds like there's only one way in and out of, when I was going through the material, I was confused of whether or not this was going through some, you know, through single-family homes right now. So there's just, there's just ones, one route in and out? Okay, that's all I wanted to confirm. Thank you.
All right. Oh, Councilmember Aldrichs?
I'll add that the, the properties being discussed are quite near the Bothal Library, which is a place where I will frequently walk to, and so I am familiar with the location of this project. And, and I can, I guess, confirm what the Drews are saying, that the easiest access to that area is if you, instead of, you know, turning towards the library, just keep going straight, that's where, that's where you see access to it. It makes absolute sense to me that we would consider these lots part of the downtown transition zone, and because the intention is to build affordable housing, that it would absolutely apply to the affordable housing overlay. And I do find that this is consistent with the land use that has been designated for that area. So appreciate you speaking so eloquently to, to this proposal tonight, and thank you.
Question for the interim city attorney. Is there going to be an opportunity to speak to the motion at the end of this as a quasi-judicial matter, or if I have a couple of general things to say, should I do that now?
So motions on quasi-judicial matters are going to be just like we would with legislative matters. So you are free to speak to it, just like you would with any other ordinance.
Fantastic. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to move to approve the site-specific rezon of King County tax parcels XYZ, A, B, C, sorry, I didn't want to, from residential R 9600 to downtown transition affordable housing overlay.
Second.
All right. I have a motion to move the recommended action from Deputy Mayor Alcabra and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Only me? One of my favorite things in the world is when people see a need that someone else has, and they do something about it. And I just want to thank the Drews for, number one, just doing this and having the idea. This is a big need, and you're filling it. And I think that's really admirable. And you've probably gotten more process than you ever wanted to deal with in your entire life as a result. So I just, I just wanted to say thank you because you're working to make the world a better place, and I think that's admirable, and I think that's something we should all do. That's all I got. All right. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Houses 600 with Councilmember McNeil absent.
All right. I got to switch scripts. Please bear with me. All right. Moving on to Agenda Bill 23194. Approve the updates to the 2023-2024 Council Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual to address the 2023 State Legislative Agenda outcomes. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and we are moving to the next section of the agenda, ordinances and resolutions. And as you noted, tonight, we are joined by Shelley Helder, who is our lobbyist assigned from Gordon Thomas Honeywell. We're here tonight because the state will be moving into what's referred to as a short session just around the corner as January hits. And the council adopted a legislative agenda and policy manual associated with interests of what they'd like to see happen in Olympia last November, on November 1st, 2022. By product of success, there's a number of things that took place within the legislative agenda that were approved and are funded. And so what Shelley is here tonight to do is to give the council a general update of what to expect in the session, as well as has some suggested housekeeping edits to make to the manual, both the legislative agenda and the policy manual. With council approval tonight, or with any changes or any direction, what we'd be looking to do is get that cleaned up so we can start communicating with, with representatives in Olympia and have it ready to go for any visits that might be taking place, and for Shelley to have direction as she's advocating for Bothal. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shelley to walk you through the upcoming session and any associated changes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Good evening. I am Shelley Helder, and I have the privilege of serving the city of Bothal as your lobbyist in Olympia and relays your, your ears and your eyes to the state legislative process. So as the city manager mentioned, I'm here this evening to provide you some preparation for what to expect in the 2024 session. So- So I'm going to provide an overview of what we do know about the 2024 session.
Hey, Shelley, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is there any way that we can turn Shelley up a little bit?
I could speak a little louder, would that help?
That would be great, too. That is, that is turning Shelley up in a matter of speaking.
Okay, I will project even louder, and hopefully that helps. So as I said, I'll talk about what we do know about the future. We'll review the city's draft legislative documents, and then wrap up by talking about next steps. It is a little difficult for me to see you all with my screen shared, so I will look forward to your comments and questions when I wrap up the presentation. So the 2024 session is a short 60-day session. It's the second of the biennium. The legislature's primary objective is to adopt supplemental operating, capital, and transportation budgets. The supplemental budgets for the state are designed to make small changes to the existing biennial budgets, and they account for changes in both caseload and revenue forecast changes. I'll just briefly review where we know each of the three budgets stand. So the operating budget is in the best condition. The operating budget is what is, the majority of your taxes go towards the operating budget. The most recent forecast shows that the state has roughly $900 million more than what was anticipated when the current budget was adopted. So they have a good, a really healthy buffer going into this supplemental session. The transportation budget has quite a different picture. Transportation project costs are continuing to come in higher than they were estimated, higher than they were estimated and therefore higher than they received funding for within the current budget. One of these projects is the dual express toll lanes on 5405 from Brickyard to SR 527. As many of you have heard, that project is roughly $250, $250 million more than what was appropriated. Broadly, WashDOT has said that their estimating projects are costing roughly 30% more than what was appropriated. And then in recent news, WashDOT also shared that their estimated cost for addressing the federal injunction to resolve state-owned fish-blocking culverts is now going to cost roughly $8 billion, nearly double what they previously estimated. Historically, fish culverts have been considered an expenditure from the state's transportation budget. However, given this recent news and the condition of the state's transportation budget, we'll see if there's any changes to that approach. The third and final budget is the capital budget, and there's roughly $95 million in remaining bond capacity, which, when you consider that the existing capital budget was funded with 4.7 billion in bonds, 95 million is, is going to be a small supplemental budget. The budget process begins with the governor's release of his proposed budget in mid-December, so we'll begin to see those in the next, the next week or so. And just for context, the governor's budget tends to be the high watermark for spending. So getting something in the governor's budget, well, great, does not guarantee that it gets in the final budget. On the policy side, every bill that was introduced in the 2023 session that did not pass will be automatically reintroduced, and of course legislators can introduce new bills as well. Democrats continue to hold strong majorities in both chambers, and typically in a short session, there are relatively fewer controversial issues taken up, and that's because every member of the House and half of the Senate is up for reelection in November of 2024. In, in general, committee assignments and committee chairs will remain the same as last year, since this is just the second year of the, the cycle. The one that I will mention is that Senator Christine Roloffus, who was the former chair of the Senate Ways and Means Committee and the lead Senate operating budget writer, stepped down from her seat in the Senate to serve on the Kitsap County Commission. She was replaced by Senator June Robinson as the lead operating budget writer in the Senate. And that's significant because the lead budget writer makes, is, is an influential role, and so having that change mid-biennium is, is noteworthy. Some of the major themes that we expect to see heading into the 24th session aren't too surprising from what you've probably heard from me before. Housing will continue to be a big focus. We know there's going to be a push for dedicated revenue source for affordable housing. Last year, the, the big push for a new revenue source included a local option, but this year, we're expecting it's going to focus on a state-level funding option only. Land use and development regulations related to housing, as you all know, the legislature passed over a dozen bills directing changes in local land use this past session with the intent of promoting more housing. We know that there will be some cleanup or, or trailer bills, as they're referred to, to clarify what the intent was, particularly for the missing middle bill. We also expect there's going to be a robust discussion on transit-oriented development as well as lot splitting. Those were two bills that were introduced the last session that did not pass. Another area of focus will be the Climate Commitment Act, which is Washington's version of a cap-and-invest program. It auctions greenhouse gas emission allowances, and in the first few auctions, it has generated substantially more revenue than was anticipated. And so the legislature will consider policy changes to potentially limit future revenue, as well as consider allocation of the unanticipated revenue. Public safety will likely continue to be an ongoing topic of conversation, which is closely related to behavioral health. The state has several lawsuits that they're facing on the behavioral health front that they will need to address. So it will be a short session, but that does not mean they will be lacking for content to, or work to accomplish. So with that kind of context of what we expect, I just wanted to remind everyone of the structure of the city's legislative program. So the city develops legislative documents to align with the state's two-year budget and legislative cycle. So since 2024 will be the second year of the biennium, the proposed changes you see this evening are all maintenance updates to the documents based on what was accomplished in the first year of the cycle. The city has two documents that guide our engagement in Olympia. The first is the legislative agenda, and that lists the city's top three to five priorities. The purpose of the legislative agenda is to focus city resources, both staff time and legislators' time, on the issues that will most directly benefit the city. And the second document is the policy manual. It lists the city's position on various policy areas that impact city business, where we think legislation may be introduced. We don't know, but in, in case there is a, an issue that comes up, we want to have a stated position adopted. And the reason for that is to have advanced direction from, from the city on major policies to allow for timely engagement during the legislative session. Legislative session is very fast-paced, a short session even more so, so that advanced direction through the policy manual helps us be really effective in our advocacy. So this is an overview of the city's legislative priorities for the 23-24 biennium, and this includes the updated language to recognize what was accomplished in the 23 session. These are all described in more detail in the draft agenda that's included in your council packet, and I'll briefly describe each of them. So the first priority, housing, highlights the ongoing challenge with the lack of available and affordable housing, and encourages the legislature to continue investing in grant programs as well as funding tools to increase the number of housing units. 2023 was described by many as the year of housing, because the legislature did make such substantial investments and passed really substantial policies as well. The big push for 2024 is to continue that trend and to make it the biennium of housing. And so the, the item on the city's priority, the priority on the city's legislative agenda would allow us to weigh in on policies that would be in alignment with that position. The second item on the city's legislative agenda is acknowledgement that the North King County Crisis Receiving Center was fully funded, and this was a capital budget project that Bothell supported along with the cities of Kirkland, Kenmore, Lake Forest Park, and Shoreline. And in addition to adding language to acknowledge the full funding, the, the updated language being, being recommended this evening also calls attention to the need for ongoing funding for coresponder programs like the crisis, the Regional Crisis Response Agency, as well as other behavioral health crisis centers. The third priority is the Bothell Way Multimodal Project. In the 2022 session, the city was awarded $7 million towards this project in the Move Ahead Washington package. But we didn't know when throughout the 16-year package, we would receive those funds. The legislature did not make that decision when they adopted the package. So in the 2023 session, we advocated for and were successful in securing those, that $7 million over the next two biennium, which is, you know, a great outcome, considering it's a 16-year package, many, many projects are going to have to wait towards the latter end of that 16 years. So our message in 2024 is one of gratitude, as well as defense. So as I mentioned, the legislature had massive shortfalls in the current budget, and they are going to be looking to ensure that all the funds that were allocated to this biennium or are planned for the next biennium will be used, because if not, they have a need for them. So it will be important that we keep our legislators informed about this project and equip them with the information to prevent any shuffling of dollars that would impact our project. The fourth priority is another item that has been accomplished, and the primary message, again, is one of gratitude. In the 2022 session, we were awarded $250,000 to support a transportation demand management startup costs at Canyon Park. We weren't able to use all of the funds before the end of the biennium, and they would have expired, so we would have lost access to them. So we, in the 2023 session, requested that that funding be re-appropriated to the new biennial budget, and our legislators made that happen, so that funding is now available for the city to use. And the final priority is one that we've made progress on and remains important to the city. We've historically requested funding for cleanup of city-owned properties through the state's remedial action grant program, and that grant funding has been critical to advancing the cleanup of downtown properties. And so we continue to advocate for ongoing funding of that program, as well as the staff that's necessary to operate it. So as you can tell, we are proposing only minor edits to the current agenda to reflect what's been accomplished and, and highlight the work that remains. We are also recommending some cleanup to the city's policy manual, again, to acknowledge what occurred in the 2023 session. And just as a reminder for the policy manual, we, these are not items that we are proactively advancing, these are topics that, that may come up that we would support or oppose in alignment with the stated position. And the policy manual is organized alphabetically, because it's intended to be more of a reference document, not a list of priorities. So the proposed changes are listed on the screen, they're also in track changes in your packet, and I'll just briefly describe each of them. The first would be removing language referencing the Crisis Receiving Center capital budget request. As I mentioned, that, that request has been fully funded. The second is updating the reference from Radar to Racer, since that's the new name of the agency. We are recommending clarifying the city's position of supporting local funding tools. The prior statement that we had said that we only opposed preemption or reduction in local taxing authority, but that doesn't provide really clear enough guidance to support policies that would increase city funding tools or flexibility. So that's the language that we're recommending there. The next change is the legislature passed a law providing greater clarity on possession of controlled substances. It's often referred to as the Blake Decision or the Blake Fix. So the language that we had in the policy manual asking the legislature to do that is proposed to be removed. Finally, the legislature allowed the diversion of payments from the Public Works Assistance Account into, so there is, the payments should have been going into the Public Works Assistance Account. The legislature years ago diverted them to go into other accounts, and that diversion was scheduled to sunset. The legislature let the diversion sunset, so now the payments are going back into the Public Works Assistance Account, and that is what we supported, and that's what we asked for in our policy manual. So we've updated the language to recognize that the legislature has made that decision. All very, very technical, but those are the, the proposed changes before you all this evening. Before I open it up for questions, I do want to just briefly talk about the next steps. So the immediate next step is for the council to approve the legislative documents, either as presented this evening or with, with further changes you all would like to see. Really finalizing these documents is critical to being prepared for the 2024 session, which begins on January 8. And since it is a short session, as I mentioned, the pace is going to be even faster, so having that guidance for you all in advance makes us much more effective. The Association of Washington Cities hosts City Action Days, which is an opportunity for city councils to travel to Olympia and participate in advocacy. They tentatively, well, they had scheduled City Action Days for January, I believe it was 28th and 29th. They, the venue where they had scheduled the conference canceled their contract, and so they are scrambling to find an alternative location for the conference. Right now, they are, they tentatively rescheduled City Action Days for February 7th and 8th, but don't book anything yet because they don't have a signed contract in place. And that's hopefully going to be finalized in the next day or so. But I, I share all of that because I know historically the council has engaged in City Action Days, but you don't have to coordinate your visit to Olympia with City Action Days. Just ask that you coordinate with one another and with me, and so that we, I think, in the past, it's been combined with City Action Days to maximize that, that time that you all are investing in advocating on the city's behalf, but we can choose another date if that works better for you all. So those are the things to consider, and I think with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shelley, for visiting again and sharing these updates with us. I really appreciate how you have made it very clear that we are grateful and appreciate the, the successes that we achieved at the last, in the last session. So thank you for that. I don't have any questions or, or suggestions. I think what you've done here is, is really thoughtful and really comprehensive. One thing I will say is that I'm very grateful that AWC is not intending to have City Action Days on balance. Days on Valentine's Day again this year. So that was, that's a good choice, and I wish them all the luck in getting, in getting a contract for those dates. So thanks for being here. I look forward to seeing you again there.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shelley. It's always good seeing you, and like, it's an annual thing, you know? We see you once a year, and then we see you the next year for an update. Thank you so much for going through this very thorough. I appreciate it. Just had a question. You, at the beginning, you were laying, you know, giving us a lay of the land and how estimating up $4.4 billion shortfall. That sound, what it sounded, it sounded like there's a $4 billion thing, 250 million and $97 million dollar gaps in budgets or, and what are the chances of anything else happening this year, in this session, given the massive amounts that we're talking about?
Are you, I'm assuming you're referring to transportation. Is that correct?
Well, transportation is 250 million. You mentioned something about 4 billion. I heard 4 billion. Did I hear that wrong?
Yeah, 4 billion is the
Eight million?
Increase price tag for the fish cohorts, the state-owned fish cohorts.
Oh, 4 million. It's an M.
No, no, billion. They're eight billion, and then they were 4 billion.
That's okay. So they doubled. That's what I'm saying. So there's 4 billion. Okay, I didn't hear that wrong. Okay. So the massive amounts that they, the state has to make up, so any chance that, we're not requesting, as far as the city, we're not requesting any additional funding this year. So I think we're good, even though the state is going to struggle this biennium.
Exactly. Yeah. And I, I mean, we are, we are being cognizant of the state, the status of the state's transportation budget. And so coming in with a transportation request this year just frankly doesn't make sense. So I think being appreciative for what we have received and being prepared to protect what we have is, is a prudent place to be.
And do you have an idea why the transportation budget, like, blew up like that?
The, the transportation budget for the last several biennium has been in a challenging place because the, the primary revenue source for the transportation budget is gas tax. And gas tax revenues continue to decline, which, you know, if we're trying to reduce carbon emissions, that's arguably a good thing. The state is looking at an alternative revenue source. One of the things that they're considering is a road usage charge. There's, one of the challenges with a road usage charge is the cost to administer it is much greater than the cost to administer the gas tax. So instead of the majority of the tax going towards the services, a larger percentage of what citizens or residents pay in the tax goes toward the administration of the tax. And that's a consideration that the legislature is trying to figure out how to get that amount lower, as well as many other factors. But it looks like that will be a future option for the legislature to hopefully balance a transportation budget.
And the, the problem is not, is the revenue, not the cost ballooning, is the revenue where, like, we haven't met the forecast or the state?
Well, that's an excellent, that's an astute observation. It is both. It is both that transportation costs continue to climb. Wash dot estimates 30% just in the last biennium, as well as the revenues are declining. A dual problem.
Hmm. So it's 250 million this year, and next year might be even worse.
Perhaps.
And one side, side question, I know you're not responsible for this, but are we going to, had the federal lobby, lobbyist, I'm sorry, I forgot his name, but
Yeah. Deputy, Deputy Mayor will bring the federal legislative agenda to council next year. Deputy, City Manager Call is working with, with Mr. Lumpkin to bring together, put together a draft agenda and work with council to, to fill it out, and we'll be doing that separately. But that is under a different contract.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. Thank you, Shelley. Appreciate it. Good to see you all, as always.
Councilmember Manke.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say a quick thank you to you, Shelley. Anytime we can cross things off of our list because they either got done or no longer a problem is a good thing. So thank you for your work in advocating for our city.
My pleasure.
All right, I'm not seeing anybody else.
Sorry. I, Shelley, I'm so sorry. I spoke too soon. Hearing my colleagues speak to you, I do have a question about potential policy bills that maybe you have some insight on. I know that the Universal Healthcare Commission has been wrapping up their work and preparing their recommendations for the legislature. Can you tell me what, what this legislative session portends on that topic?
Good question, and I'll, I'll start by saying, you know, healthcare policy is not my, my area of expertise, but just knowing the context for what this short session will bring, I imagine that those recommendations will prompt some really robust conversation that will lay the groundwork for a policy that would then be adopted in 2025. I, I would be surprised if a policy of that magnitude were, were advanced in a short session.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the description.
Thank you again, Shelley, for coming up here. I don't have any questions. It's just a hold-on-and-play-defense kind of year, given our context. I appreciate the reality of what you brought us, and we'll, we'll keep our hopes realistic and look forward to seeing you on the 7th and 8th of February.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are looking for a motion to approve the changes as well.
Mayor, I motion to approve the recommended action.
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Aldrich and a second from Councilmember Manke to approve the recommended action, which is to approve the updates to the 2023-2024 Council Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual to address the 2023 State Legislative Agenda outcomes. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent.
All right, next up, we have Agenda Bill 23195. Actually, the next three agenda items will have one presentation. And I am going to, rather than leave, read all the numbers off, call on City Manager Standard to introduce the topics.
That's great, Mayor, because as luck would have it, we have a slide for that, so I think that'll, that'll work well. You know, as, as you mentioned, we are here tonight with the final adoption or proposed final adoption of the mid-biennial budget. There's been some changes, but most of those changes have also been limited to, or focused on staffing changes too. So I do want to just note that we are joined tonight by Finance Director Kwan Wong. And also at the table is Boyd Benson, our Utilities and Development Division Manager at Public Works. What is before you tonight? We'll have a brief presentation wrap, summarizing the, the changes proposed from the biennial budget, and then there is a helpful slide at the end. You will have six motions to go through, and yes, you get to do it six times, but you'll be pros by the end of it. Again, just a thank you to the staff who are behind making this work happen. It's, it does take the entire organization when we talk about budgets, and it is important policy work that comes to council. So thank you to Kwan, to Andrew, who are both new to the team since we adopted the budget. As somebody who was at the table last year, I know Ted and I both are thankful to have new teammates. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Kwan Wong.
Thank you, Kyle. Again, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Good to see you again. So this is the night we are asking you to adopt the 23-24 mid-biennial budget with housekeeping And we have before you several actions. They are in your packet, and we are happy to answer your questions when the appropriate time comes. So the first action that we are asking for you today is to adopt the 2024 Fee Schedule Resolution. The second item is to adopt the 2024 Water Sewer and Storm and Surface Water Utility Rates and associated Boffel Municipal Code updates. The last item, and not least, is to adopt the city's 23-24 biennial budget. And again, they are housekeeping amendments and the city's position list updates. So just to remind you and the audience that since July of this year, we have been coming to the city council for various presentations and asking you for feedback. We did have several study sessions on the budget as well as the utility rates. And we did hold two public hearings as required by state law. On November the 14th, we had a public hearing on the proposed 23-24 biennial budget, the fees, and also the study session on water and sanitary sewer facility charges. And following that week, on November the 21st, we did hold a public hearing on the proposed 24 sewer water and surface water utility rates and BMC updates. So tonight is really the final appearance before you on the mid-biennial budget, asking you to approve amendments, 24 rates and fees. To recap what was presented before you, again, all of those housekeeping items, they fall into really three categories. The first one focuses on the general fund operating amendments. They include contracting with NACOM for all the police 911 dispatch service. This is to align with the council decision made earlier this year. We also want to update the citywide position lists. We made many reclassifications and also to reflect the list that council did a couple years ago in defunding several positions. And of course, we accepted new grants. The second category belongs to the capital project and program, and they reflect updates on the budget as well as schedule changes. So again, those are very technical. We do have other major projects, and they belong to different revenue sources. So we are not asking for new funding, but just switching the color of money. The third category belongs to the 24 rates and fees. And of course, the first four belongs to the utility rates, and we are asking council to adopt the water increase by 6.25%, the sewer rate by 4.25%, the storm rate by 5.75%. And the last one is a technical adoption of the code Title 18 amendments. And the last category belongs to the 24 fee schedule, and mostly we are proposing a CPI update by about 4.5%. So with that, again, we are asking council to consider the following actions. And the motions are in your packet as well, but let me reiterate them. The first action that we're asking you to do is to adopt the 24 Fee Schedule Resolution as proposed. The second one is to adopt the 2024 Utility Rate and the Title 18 updates. Motion one is to adopt ordinance for the 2024 Water Utility Rates and Billing. The second motion is to adopt the ordinance for 2024 Sewer Utility Rates and Billing. The third motion is to adopt ordinance for the 2024 Storm and Surface Water Utility Rates and Billing. Motion four is to adopt the ordinance amending Boffel Municipal Code Title 18. The third item for you to approve is to adopt the city's 2023 to 24 mid-biennial budget. Again, those are housekeeping amendments and to update the citywide position list. With that, we are here to answer your questions, if any.
Y'all are going to keep Laura busy for the next little bit. Council?
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I feel like we have had lots of conversations on these topics already, and we are, we are prepared to, to do this next part. Does that mean I should make a motion on the first motion? Okay, let me get back to that.
While you look that up, I just want to take a minute to just appreciate sort of the cadence that we've gotten into, where we have a study session, we have a public hearing, and then it's up for a decision. Because by the time we get to a decision, it's like, we have beaten this horse. Like, I have no more questions. We've been through this a couple times already, and it's, it's nice when things come and we feel very prepared and we feel comfortable that we've had input on them. And so just, thank you, everybody. I, I really enjoy that.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you. I motion to adopt the 2024 Fee Schedule Resolution as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldrich and a second from Councilmember Dodd. City Clerk, would you be okay if we voted on these with a show of hands? Or City Attorney, is that a, just to save time? I'm going to guess based on that look that she's giving Laura, we're going to do a roll call vote.
You have a, a city attorney, an interim city attorney who gives conservative advice.
All right.
Should we just do the roll call?
Let's do a roll call vote.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent.
I will accept another motion. Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance for 2024 Water Utility Rates 6.25% and Billing.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion, and by Councilmember Dodd, and a second from Deputy Mayor Alcabra. Would anybody like to discuss or speak to the motion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent.
Deputy Mayor.
Oh, I left it open for the next
I took the opportunity to call on you.
All right, I moved adopt, so we're on motion two, right?
Three.
It's two on the list.
Oh, motion, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Motion to adopt ordinance for 2024 sanitary sewer utility rates 4.25% and billing.
Second.
All right, I got a motion from the Deputy Mayor Alcabra and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent.
Deputy Mayor, I see your light on.
Let's do this. Can I ask a procedural question? Can we go, like, motion, two motions at the same time, or multiple motions at the same
These are technically, this is my fault, council. I will tell you that. And so Aaron and Boyd, this is my fault. These are all four different ordinances, so they do deserve
Okay.
Their different motions, so, and my apologies to the council.
No, no, it's not your fault. This is, it is what it is.
Everybody's like, can we have a cookie, Eileen? Can we have a cookie? And it's like, no cookies!
This actually might be the closest we'll ever get to, like, a votorama. So, you know, we should just embrace it for what it is.
All right. So I move to adopt ordinance for 2024 Storm and Surface Water Utility Rates 5.75% and Billing.
Second.
I've got a motion from Deputy Mayor Alcabra and a second from Councilmember Manke. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk. Seeing none, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmembers Zornz.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Yes.
Councilmember Manke.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent.
I like how everybody else turns off their lights immediately, you know, so. I move to adopt ordinance amending Batho Municipal Code Title 18.
Second.
Oh, spicy! The, I think, I think Councilmember Dodd was the first born on that question, on that one. I've got a motion from Deputy Mayor and a second from Councilmember Dodd, closely followed by Councilmember Zornz. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmembers Zornz.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Yes.
Councilmember Manke.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent.
I move to adopt the city's 2023-24 mid-biennial budget, housekeeping amendments, and the citywide position list updates.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Deputy Mayor Alcabra and a second from Councilmember Zornz, would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmembers Zornz.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Yes.
Councilmember Manke.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember McNeil absent.
Fantastic. All right, I think that's that. We are tired, it is late, and we have a short meeting coming up next week, and there has been conversation about kicking off our last discussion items next week. Procedurally, what would be the best way to accomplish that?
Mayor, I think you can just ask us to bring that one back next week, and we'll do it. Since there's no vote, there's no nothing, it's just the study session, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'd be okay with that, if that's, if that's up for, if that's agreeable to the council.
Whatever we decide as a council, I just want to thank staff for being patient and bearing with us as we've troged through this evening.
Forever and ever.
Can I, I just want to make sure that that works for staff, though, everybody's good to come back and...
Yes, we are, we'll, we'll be here next week.
Okay.
And it's a reasonably open agenda next week. Well, in that case, I'm going to adjourn.
Recording stopped.